But I think that one of the things is that when you do this program, and we have the CTA buses, Northwestern has been very successful in fundraising, so there's lots of traffic, the sand and gravel trucks, the concrete tracks, three bus lanes going down there. It's just, they're just, I'm sorry, there isn't room for them. There is no more space. We've reached the max capacity. I can understand.
Rosemary, you can never be persona non grata here, but I do need you to wrap up.
All right, fine. I will close by saying, I heartily support SP1, that you defer this, because it's going to be like a cemetery monument. If it goes up, it'll never come down, and if it's wrong, we're stuck with it. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lee Sudeikin, and I'll just be very brief. I applaud the council's past efforts and encourage you to continue to invest in the quality of life, economic development potentials, and overall vitality of the community by investing in bike infrastructure and policies, including protected bike lanes, additional bike racks, the Divvy Bike Share Program, and biking education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sue is next.
I'm Sue Carlson. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am going to start out my comments by saying I'm really excited about where we're going insofar as biking is concerned here in Evanston. But I'm going to be reading some comments that Debbie Hillman sent me by email today. She's not able to be here today, and I believe Alderman Wilson received the same comments. I'm going to kind of skim through some of her comments, because I felt, I feel there, some of these questions that she raises have already been raised today. But she's saying, is there a single existing transportation document for Evanston? Can city council identify one single document that was previously adopted by the council that's guiding all transportation decisions in the city? We've just heard a little bit about parking and biking. Is there a complete, is it the Complete Streets Ordinance? Is it the Comprehensive General Plan? I'm sure that's not it, but I mean, there are a lot of things that we have planned. The multimodal plan, and then there's going to be the age-friendly Evanston plan. How is that going to impact this? So I think there are lots of things that are questions that we need to answer, and the council is really responsible for answering, you know, what is the governing document in this? And then, when there's conflict, what, you know, what's, what's going to have the top priority? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mitra Hartman. I was a bicycle commuter for 13 years in the Los Angeles area. I moved to Evanston approximately 11 years ago, so I have a good basis for comparison. The first thing is that I'd like to disabuse everybody of the notion that Evanston is a bike-friendly city as of yet. I found it much safer to bicycle in the Los Angeles area, which is known for its car ridership, than I do in Evanston. It prevents me from commuting to work. It's terrifying and scary for me to bicycle to work these days. I was equally struck, when I moved to Evanston, at the tremendous untapped potential for bikeability, for community building around bike and pedestrians, and accounting for the different momentum, the different masses and velocities of the different vehicles. So I haven't been able to participate in any of the previous town hall meetings, but I learned from Speaker number eight that this bicycle plan was driven by significant data, and therefore I have three requests for public transparent data. The first request is for transportation data, street usage, simulation, simulated effects of closures, network data, how the streets are connected, how they're used, and I'd like that data to be public, publicly available and available for analysis by everyone. The second thing is, I'm interested in the economic data, how business owners in the Evanston community feel that increased bicycles, reduced parking, or contrary, increased parking, reduced bicycles, either way, I'd like to hear from business owners on what they feel the economic consequences are of improving walkability and bikeability in Evanston. The third request is for a transparent statement of stakeholders in bike plans. So business owners are clearly one, Northwestern students and Northwestern communities clearly another, community citizens are clearly another, pedestrians who cannot bicycle are clearly another. I'd like a statement of stakeholders in this process. And I think that those three requests for data would be very helpful, like actual numbers or simulations available would be very helpful to me, at least. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lynda Damaschek, Eric Zorn, and Marion Bowen.
Good evening. I, I'd like to say I agree with her request for data. Sounds like good information. And I wanted to thank all the citizens. I also read all the comments in the bike policy manual today, and it's a complex issue with a lot of safety considerations. But I'm coming here tonight to ask you to seriously consider having Hinman and Orington as the bike route instead of Chicago Avenue. As one of the previous speakers talked about the, the speed differentials, Sheridan Road is unbelievably congested and complex, and I have actually a safety concern that I'd like to point out, which is not related to bike paths, but I think it's important to note, that currently taxis, pizza delivery cars, and private passengers pretty much consider Sheridan Road as a drop-off zone. They, they stop their cars, they leave them undetended, they put their flashers on. It's really stunning to me, and I would like to ask that this be looked into by the police department, Northwestern's police department, our police department, and that make sure that they get ticketed so that they'll stop doing that. But in the comments that I read today, there were a lot of people that were concerned about the loss of trees, so that the plans that you have for Sheridan Road would involve the loss of a lot of very mature trees, and that concerns me. And basically, you just need a safe north-south route, and I think focusing on lovely quiet streets like Hinman and Orington, and I know, I understand that there's certain places where you have to, to route it, give people direction for a block or two, but I really think that that would be a better experience for the bikers. I want bikers to have a good, safe experience.
And I do need you to wrap up.
Okay, anyway, so I'd like to ask that you seriously consider that suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Testol, council members. There we go. My name is Eric Zorn, and I am the Northwestern Student Body Vice President, and I am speaking today on special order number one. Like many of my peers, every day I attempt to bike up and down Sheridan Road, going to and from classes and meetings. I say "attempt" because it's actually nearly impossible to bike along the eastern Sheridan Road sidewalk in the middle of the day. Therefore, unable to keep up with dangerous traffic in the street, I sometimes try using the still-crowded sidewalk on the west side on the street, but usually end up taking an indirect path through the middle of campus, or just walking my bike. Naturally, Northwestern students have long been asking for a bike path along Sheridan, our busiest quarter on campus. In fact, a campus-wide survey of over 2,000 undergraduates last year revealed that more than 95% of students would like to see a bike lane added to Sheridan Road in some capacity. After reviewing all city presentations on the project and meeting with Alderman Fisk, Alderman Grover, and other city council, and other city staff members, Northwestern's Associated Student Government is in full support of a design centered around a two-way bike lane on the east side of Sher, of the street. A two-way lane on the east side is most likely to be used by the Northwestern community users on a day-to-day basis. In reality, very few bikers would take the time to cross the street to use a bike lane on the western side, just to head a couple blocks south, and then re-cross the street again back to the primary eastern side, where all Northwestern classes and main buildings are. Additionally, a bike lane on the west side would require riders to constantly watch out for cars trying to turn out from one of the nine-side streets that funnel out onto Sheridan along campus, whereas there are only two rarely-trafficked ones on the east side. Based on our conversations with dozens of Northwestern students along the last few weeks, we can confidently tell you that a bike lane on the east side is safer and more practical for the riders who will be most frequently using the lane along this stretch. A bike lane on the west side simply wouldn't be used, and many riders would continue to dodge their way through pedestrian traffic on the eastern side. As the most frequent users of Sheridan Road between Clark and Lincoln, Northwestern students want to see this project move forward this year. While we recognize that there are still some minor concerns to still flesh out, let's not delay this critical project until 2017.
Mr. Zorn, you need to wrap up.
Last sentence. Hopefully, everyone here tonight can agree a Sheridan bike lane and street renovation are urgently needed as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, council members. I'm Marion Bowen, and I am eyewitness to what happens between Crane and Dempster at Dodge. I have a building right there, and I have an eye view every day of the traffic. I want to point out that the corner of Dempster and Dodge has the following. We have a bus stop, we have a currency exchange that exits right into the bus stop and to the stoplight. I'm telling you that that corner is getting major, major congestions. I was so happy to hear of the bike lane that was going to be proposed, because I see many, many bicyclists riding on the sidewalk, doing everything they can to get out of that corner. That corner is a real problem. There is three exits from buildings within 50 feet. I'm proposing that there is limited parking, that there is no parking, and that the people that, along that stretch between Crane and Dempster, they do have garages that they can park their cars that they never park in, and they also have parking lots that they can use, which they don't use. I'm just telling you that I think you should look at this very carefully, because there is many, many dangerous problems there. Starbucks has been extremely popular, the cars over there are great to see them, it's going to be great to see more cars at Evanston Plaza, but it'd be great to see a lot of bicyclists coming over there. That's going to be a wonderful, wonderful stopping point for bicyclists. Please keep this in mind between Crane and Dempster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The last two speakers are Junead Risky and Virginia Beatty.
Why are we passing that rule? Ms., Ms.
My presentation would be much better some other time, because this is bicycle time, but you might all like to remember that Francis Willard in 1880 wrote a book suggesting bicycle riding, and it's still in print.
Thank you very much.
This is sort of heavy, what it is. It's a patio brick from the city that the city has. I bought it from the city. I was going to ask, did we get the bill for the Peckish Pig patio? Has it been paid? It was due on Saturday. I think this Peckish Pig patio opened the community's eyes to the fact of, with the city building patios for private businesses, is a very interesting thing. When you look around even at the bike lanes, all these people here, are these bike lanes being maintained? City workers were used to build this patio. Are your bike lanes being maintained in town? Are we building patios for businesses? Very interesting. But the problem is, it was brought into, under a $20,000 limit of spending. And there, I think there are many other things that are going on here under that $20,000 limit that council members want. And I think it's a serious issue that's going to have to be addressed here, and this council's going to have to start dealing with it, because I'm wondering where I see certain things being done here, and why they're being done. And really, there needs to be some fiscal responsibility and control from council members on these things. So I think with that, I'm going to close, but we'll, we'll leave it at that. And I'll give this to Clerk Green to hold for me in his office. He gets these for a while, so I'll carry it down for you, though. It's pretty heavy.
Thank you. One thing, I'm sorry, I forgot, the mayor's comments is to say that, I'm very sorry to announce that Jack Siegel, who worked for us for many years, died on Tuesday, September 23rd, of cancer. Jack was corporation counsel in Evanston from 1963 to 2009, then served more than 50 years as village attorney for both Schaumburg and Arlington Heights. He grew up in the South Shore neighborhood of Chicago, enlisted in the Navy immediately after graduating from South Shore High School. World War II was winding down, and he spent his naval career in officer training stateside. He returned to Chicago after the war, to study at the University of Chicago, earned a master's degree in political science before earning a law degree from the university's law school, and he was known throughout the state as a well-respected municipal attorney. City manager, do you have special orders of business?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. We have several items this evening dealing with biking and the bike plan that was recently adopted by the city council. There are three projects that we have been focused on going into 2015, over the next couple of years. SP1, which deals with Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue. SP2, which deals with Dodge Avenue. SP3, which deals with biking improvements at Mason Park and adjacent to ETHS. So we have staff here, Sat Nigar, our city engineer, Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works are both here, and I think we'll, we'll walk through each of these one by one. And then SP4, Ilda Capricio, so the Assistant to the City Manager, she is here, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about some of the policy issues. We want to make sure that we're clear this evening moving forward with these projects of what the desires of the city council are. Each of these projects have challenges. Certainly, you'll hear the challenges that we've been facing on the Sheridan Road, Chicago Avenue project. We want to make sure we're doing this right. We want to make sure that you are comfortable with the process that we're moving forward with. Certainly, on the matter of Sheridan Road, it's a very large project, a very complicated project, and we want to make sure we do it right. So we're here this evening to, with new suggestions for that project, new suggestions on Dodge Avenue, and then the discussion on Mason Park and ETHS, largely because we want to make sure we're doing it right. And we want to make sure that these plans, which have been talked about, in some cases for several years, remain the council's wishes as we move forward. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, unless there's any preliminary questions, Mr. Nigar is here, and we'll, we'll start with SP1 regarding Sheridan Road.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, city manager, Mr. Bobkovich, city clerk, Mr. Green. We have a brief presentation on Sheridan Road, based on our engineering analysis and all the community involvement. I'm going to run through the slides. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop me. Just a brief background on Sheridan Road. Sheridan Road is a major north-south arterial connecting downtown city of Chicago with suburban North Shore communities and Northwestern. Sheridan Road, basically between South Boulevard and Isabella Street, was, the whole Sheridan Road was under the jurisdiction of the state, and the city took over this in 2008, between South Boulevard and Isabella Street. So there's a section between South Boulevard and June Way Terrace, which still belongs to the state. As all of you know from our past presentations, that Sheridan Road is a multimodal corridor with cars, buses, bikes, pedestrians, taxi cabs, the Northwestern shuttle, CTA buses, you name it. So it's very heavily used and really a very exciting corridor and an exciting project. We were able to finish two sections of Sheridan Road since the city took over the GT between South Boulevard and Main in 2008 and '09, and in 2010 and '11, we were able to construct the section between Burnham and Chicago, with all the underground work and pretty much partly reconstruction and partly resurfacing. I'm not going to go too much into the detail on what has been done. I just wanted to run through the community involvement, what we have done to date, in terms of the steering committees, and then going to the ward meetings. Basically, from the, since the last council meeting in August, I'm just going to start from there. We went to the seventh ward meeting, the fourth, and the ninth ward, the second ward, and then we met with the Northwestern Square and Association, as well as the fifth ward. So in all these ward meetings, we did present the alternate options for Sheridan Road, option A, option B, and option C, that did show the Sheridan Road improvement, as well as the bike path. And based on our engineering analysis and the community involvement, we pretty much have come up with a recommendation for Sheridan Road. This is, right now, the Sheridan Road has four lanes between Chicago and Lincoln, and there's a transition between Lincoln and Central. Based on the traffic analysis and running the, the synchro models and all, we were able to decide, basically, we need four lanes on Sheridan Road between Chicago and Foster. Between Foster and Northwestern Place, there will be a transition from four lanes to three lanes, and then north of, I'm going to the next slide. But before I go, I just also wanted to point out, based on our analysis, we feel that having a two-way bike lane on the east side, on the Northwestern side, is the most beneficial, and it will be widely used. That is going to separate the bikes from the cars, as well as the pedestrians. So this is Sheridan Road, starting at the Chicago-Shereden intersection and going north. Then, the section from Northwestern Place to Central will be three lanes. That's all we need to make sure a good level of service is maintained on the east side, and pretty much you will have the turn lanes at the, on the cross streets. So the advantages of providing this is you will have a minimum, whatever is existing, we should be able to maintain the existing lane, existing street width, and still provide the lanes and the bike lane. The section between Central and the end of the city limit, which is the Isabella Street, we need to go through a few of the neighborhood streets, so which, through which we are going to have some neighborhood meetings, talk to the neighbors, explain what we are trying to do, and get some input. So that section is not shown today. Now, coming back to the Chicago-Shereden intersection, we are pretty much staying on the east side, going through the intersection, since we have the bike lane on the east side. So this section would pick up from here to south, will have a bike lane, same thing on the east side. As you can see, between Church and Sheridan, the two-way, the two-way cycle track will be on the east side. We are going to have one lane each way, and parking on the west side. So this is all pretty much within the existing right-of-way. The last section is between Davis and Church. We are just going to maintain the parking on the west side, and we have, pretty much it functions as two lanes each way with the center line, and a two-way cycle track on the east side. So what we are trying to do is, all the way from downtown to Central and through the Northwestern, we are pretty much accommodating the cycle track on the east side, two-way cycle track, separated from the pedestrians, so that the, the cycle, the bikes doesn't have to go on the sidewalks, or doesn't have to be on the street, pretty much they will have their own lane, and we feel that this would be very safe, as well as a lot easier to deal with the traffic issues. And at each of these intersections, the signals will be upgraded to have the bike lanes, so the bike lanes will have their own signals to cross each street. I just want to briefly run through the schedule. For 2015, all we are trying to do is when, during the summer months, after the Northwestern graduation, before the students come back, we just want to keep the construction season like what we did on the signals. We did upgrade all the signals, we did within the timeframe when the students are not here, even though there'll be some summer, summer school maybe there, but to minimize the impacts, so we would like to do the water main lining. This water main lining will happen between Chicago and Lincoln, the existing water main will be lined. Then we have the water main replacement between Lincoln and Ingleside, and then further north, so there is a water main replacement. And then, after replacing the water main, there will be, the street will be restored with patches. So most of the work will be done during the summer, and then, when we are going through the, this is underground work for the design, still we need to, as we did the phase one for Sheridan Road in 2007, 2008, we just went through, what do you call it, 3R guidelines, means you do all the improvements within the existing curb. By adding the, the bike lane with the ITAP grant, we need to go back to IRAT, and through the historic preservation, we had to go through formal approval process, at the same time, work with the Northwestern University, and pretty much do the coordination necessary, and come up with all the design details to make the bike lane, as well as the street, safer for both, and then finish up the phase one engineering. And then, in 2016, our plan is to do the real hardcore construction plans, how the street will be built, how the bike lanes, how there will be a separation from each other, and then, at the same time, we are shooting for a construction of the Emerson Ridge-Green Bay intersection, because we do not want to have construction at both the locations, so that, want to finish up this, so that when you go on Sheridan Road, this Green Bay and Ridge will be through for the traffic flow, flow through them. So the 27 construction, we are going to start on Chicago Avenue in spring, and then move on to the Sheridan Road within the time limits that are given. One more thing I wanted to point out, next, in 2015, also Northwestern wants to have several utility crossings. They want to bring from the east side to the west side several utility crossings. So we will be working with, as we install the water, as we do the water main lining, we'll also be working with Northwestern to accommodate them of their utility crossing as well. So that is a brief presentation. Yeah, I would be able to take any questions if you have now.
Alderman, when?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Nigar. My question is, knowing the condition of Sheridan Road right now, I, what can we do to make Sheridan Road drivable for that time period between now and when we repave it? Because it, it really is on its last legs.
Sure. We did talk about this, and we feel that when once we, even for the water main lining, we need to make five-by-five huge trench openings in the street. So when we do these trench openings, and when we patch them, we will make sure that whole area is taken care of, so there will be a major patching that is going to be done as a part of the underground work, to make sure the street can last till 2017.
So when we patch it, it will be something that's more than just a simple patch? It will be something that will last a year or two?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much to you and staff. This has been an incredibly long project, and you've been in front of my constituents many times, for two years or more now, about these issues, and, and they very much appreciate the thoughtful way that the staff has responded. And Suzette, thank you. You've spent a lot of time with them as well. I, I agree with the two-lane bike tra, path on the east side of Sheridan Road. I think that answers the question, and as always, I think the Northwestern students had a great deal of input, and I thank you for waiting until they got back, so that we could meet with them to discuss that. My only, my only concern with that, with the planning, is between Chicago Avenue and Northwestern Place, I would very much prefer that we look at not going into the parkways, but we remain in the existing street width, and go down to three lanes for those four blocks, I think it is? Maybe not even four blocks, I think it may be three blocks. I think with the three lanes and the turn lane in the middle, what that will do is that, that will help slow traffic down, and we're very concerned about pedestrians crossing into campus during those three blocks, too. And I think that will be really helpful. So if this, if this planning schedule allows for that, I'd like to continue that discussion with, while the Northwestern students are here as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that we'll definitely look into that. Also, I, I mean, some of the improvements we are recommending as a part of the Sheridan Road, we'll be having separate bus pullouts and, as well as the taxi cabs. So this will be only for the street. Everything will be off, and we will also have safer pedestrian mid-block crossings that will be built as a part of the project. So there are several other measures that we are looking into.
Well, one of the other things that we're going to be discussing tonight during, I think SP4, is where the buses are going, and especially on Sheridan Road. I mean, Sheridan Road is now, we didn't mention tonight, is a major construction route. So in and out of campus, we're having lots and lots and lots of traffic there as well, so it's very congested right now. And I'm, I, I don't think we've got to move traffic through that four-block corridor quite as quickly as we would like. I think taking it a little bit easier is going to be helpful to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Nigar. I think the Sheridan-Chicago Improvement Project is a really important one, exciting and complicated all at the same time. We've been working on this four months, as you know, and as Mrs. O'Neil said, you've got to plan it right. And, and, so I think it's both good news and bad news, that I was hoping the- And, and, so I think it's both good news and bad news, that I was hoping the project would advance sooner, and that it could happen next year. But I think the good news is, that we have come to a consensus around a two-way cycle track on the east side of Chicago Avenue, with lots of input, and extending that further south, one maybe two blocks, and it makes sense for so many reasons. So, as much as I would have liked to have seen this happen next year, I'm glad it will happen, and I'm glad it'll happen with a two-way cycle track. My question is, do we lose any efficiencies by doing this in, in two phases, really? Do we, by doing the underground work, and then two years later, dealing with the roadbed to accommodate a two-way cycle track, do we lose, are there additional costs to us in this part of the project? And when, when we discussed adding a two-way cycle track, I think it was understood, too, that we would need to shift the roadbed a bit. And I'm wondering, as we then do the, let's call it Phase One, which is the underground work and some, some of the patching of the surface, will we be shifting the roadbed at that point to accommodate a two-way cycle track? Or, or can we do that work in 2015 with an eye towards what a two-way cycle track requires?
Yeah, just to answer your question, the existing water main will be left in place, we are just lining it. So, there is no shift in any of the underground utilities, only the structures that you see on the streets, like the catch basins, when we widen those, those will be shifted, so pretty much, that's going to stay. So the efficiency-wise, I don't think there will be any deficiency in the efficiency, because given the timeframe we have, I think we were pretty much very aggressive trying to get everything done. Realistically, looking at the, the scope of work, we feel that it is better to spread this over, as you can see, even in Wilmette, this was a two-year project, most of the underground work was done one year, and then they came back, did the street, so it's pretty much impossible, big disaster.
And while you mentioned Wilmette, it does have to be said that Wilmette put in their bike lanes five years ago on Sheridan Road. So we are five years behind the Village of Wilmette in incorporating some kind of bike infrastructure on Sheridan Road. Yeah. So the question is about whether or not the cycle lanes, the two-way cycle track, requires us to shift the roadbed?
No.
And does that make sense with the work that we want to do in 2015?
Absolutely. That's going to be a separate design by itself, the, the bike lane, we're going to decide what material we're going to use, how we are going to separate them out, so it will be a separate, so it's not going to change the, any of the road, whatever we are doing on the street, no.
But we can engineer around that with an eye towards
Absolutely. We will keep that in mind, yes.
The bike infrastructure in 2017, without any additional cost to us.
That's correct.
Alderman Wilson.
I was just going to make a motion unless anybody else wanted to.
Alderman Burrus has the light on, do you want to wait, or go ahead?
Ask a question?
It's actually just a thank you. Thank you to Sat and Suzette for listening and coming to a lot of meetings and taking feedback. I, I think we, we have it right, and I would concur with Alderman Grover, where it would be great to have it constructing next year. Getting it right is more important than getting it done fast. And I think we are getting it right, are as close to right as, as we can. So, thank you. And it takes a long time to go through the process, but really appreciate it.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
I move that we direct the staff to proceed in accordance with the recommended course of action set forth, and I guess it was more specific in the presentation as opposed to the packet, but proceed with that course of action.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
And just a point of clarification, if I may, one of our speakers suggested that by doing this tonight, that we were somehow approving contracts for the underground work. And, and my read is that this has nothing to do with our ultimate consideration of contracts for underground work on Sheridan Road, or this is not a go-ahead for that.
No.
That is correct. This is, this is a policy direction of the Evanston City Council, for us to then come back to you at future meetings with all of those documents.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Next, Madam Mayor, SP Two, Dodge Avenue is also a, a part of the bike plan. We have, have taken a fresh look at, at this project, and we wanted to bring back to a revision, which we think is consistent to the discussions that we've heard from the City Council, so Mr. Nigar has that as well.
You were right the first time. No, you're right, all together.
Yep. Good evening, I'm going to start with Dodge Avenue. Okay, we did submit the grant application with the protected bike lane, in which the parking is being moved away from the curb and the bike lane. When we did talk to IDAT and started applying the IDAT design standards, there are several parking impacts. So, what we have done is, we revised the design for buffered bike lanes. Buffered bike lanes is pretty much bike lane with leaving the parking next to the curb, and then having buffer on both sides. So the, the bikers will have the safety, both from the parked cars and the traveling cars as a part, as well as there'll be, they are in between in the zone with the buffer on either side. So these are some of the pictures that illustrates the buffered bike lane. This is pretty much for the whole length of Dodge Avenue from Howard to Church. So I'm just going to go through the, we did come up with, what are the impacts of changing from a protected bike lane to a buffered bike lane? And in terms of the parking impacts, we did analyze, the existing parking, this is basically looking at every block that has a signal, Howard to Mulford, existing parking is 61. If you were to go ahead and do the protected bike lane, you'll lose 10 spaces. With the buffered, the impact would be only two spaces. From Mulford to Oakton, existing is 75. With the, so I'm not going, see, right now, the, even the protected bike lane is not our recommendation, our recommendation is buffered, so I'm just going to go through the buffered. So buffered bike lane impact is only two parking spaces. Oakton to Main, there is only loss of one parking space. Main to Greenleaf, with the buffered bike lane, there'll be only six parking spaces. What we need to do is, basically, to preserve the parking spaces along Dodge, we are going to have a shared lane, basically from Main to 200 feet north, because of the higher parking demands. And then, Greenleaf to Dumpster, this is where the impact looks higher because of the width of the street. The buffered bike lane, this is the section between Greenleaf and Dumpster, basically on the west side. So, we feel that the, because of the dumpster, Dominique's Parking Lot, where there is enough parking available, we should be able to, you know, this, this loss can be mitigated there, but there will be parking left there on, on the east side, only the west side, the parking will be, there'll be parking impacts. Dumpster to Lake, if we do the buffered bike lane, we can add two spaces, basically at Greenwood, the Greenwood is the cul-de-sac that comes to Dodge, we can add two spaces. And then from Lake to Church, buffered parking lane impact is minus six. Overall, there are 532 spaces available on Dodge. With the buffered bike lane, the impact would be 32. So the, we are kind of requesting that we can proceed with the design, but just to let you know that we still, we need to go through the CMAP, which is, we received the federal funding through, CMAC funding through CMAP. So we need to go and present the scope change, and they had approved the scope change, and then we had to go to IDAT, get the design variance and design approval before proceeding further. Just, these are the next steps. What we are planning to do is, based, if the council approves the, the buffered bike lane, we still need to, we want to hold two public meetings, one at Mason Park in November, one at Levy Center in December, and then, based on the, concurrently working with CMAP and IDAT, we had to get the design approved, and then submit the final construction plans to IDAT, and hopefully we should be able to construct this in 2015.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, we can do this, make this change, is not required by IDAT? We're just going back to them to say we want to change from one to the other?
Yes, because of the parking impacts on the protected bike lane, and moving the parking?
I got that.
So, because of that, we are going, we are, we are suggesting we go to the buffered bike lane.
I understand that, and we are recommending that because of the loss of the 93 parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
Alderman Wilson.
Thank you, it's, it's really, it's a net loss of about 50, little less than 60 spaces, right?
Thirty-two spaces.
I mean, between the differential between the two, so either way, you're going to lose some. Okay, the protected lane has already been approved by CMAP and IDAT, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we could proceed as is, without getting any additional changes, if that's the course we chose?
That's correct.
Okay. And the, my understanding is the only reason that we're, or that's being presented for reconsideration is the parking? It's not that it's safer the other way, or there's no other, you know, reasons for making the change besides the parking?
Yes, parking losses.
Okay.
Alderman Wynn.
Well, yes, thank you, Mr. Nigar. Alderman Wilson answered a few of my questions, but can you tell me, I mean, I, I can assume this in some way, but is there data to show that the protected bike lane is safer than a buffered bike, like bike lane on a street like Dodge, which carries traffic at a fairly high rate of speed? So, which is safer for the bicyclist?
We have not found any data, we need to look into that. We can, we can look into the data and see, but we don't have any at this time.
I think several of the speakers raised a really legitimate point, that, you know, obviously, we all know that the, the higher the speed of the car, no matter what type of accident it's in, the likelier, the higher the likelihood is of, of damage. And, you know, I think of Dodge, and it's, it's not a slow-moving street, by any means. And so I would have some concerns about moving it from the protected bike lane, and I recognize that those protected bike lanes have a variety of issues, but moving it to the buffered bike lane, you know, I, I'm not sure how much people actually respect that striping. And that street carries trucks and cars that are going much faster. So, you know, I, I want to understand better what we're doing in terms of bike safety there. Because obviously, this is, this is the, a terrific route for all ETHS students going from south of, you know, south of Davis Street to the high school, and, you know, you, they're just, it's just a river of kids walking down Dodge every day to and from ETHS. And the, the ability to be able to move onto your bike and ride safely is, is really critical, I think. So I, I have, I have some concerns about that, because, you know, as the, as the parent of an ETHS, or I'm not, I don't want to sabotage our bike lane plan, but, you know, I'm not, I, I don't let, I never let my kids ride their bike to school on Lake Street, because I think Lake is just plain unsafe. But I want to know about Dodge.
We will be able to, to look into that, but I wanted to point out that the, the parking situation on Dodge Avenue is a little different than what we encounter downtown. The, the parking that happens along Dodge is mostly residential parking, people coming home overnight. It is virtually 100% parked at night already. As, as a part of the snow route parking ban, that's probably, that and Ridge, Ridge Avenue up across from the Civic Center, is a very heavily parked area for, and I don't think, I don't know what the alternatives would be for, I mean, the people find somewhere to go when it's a snow route parking ban. But, so, so that was part of why we looked at lessening, reducing the, the parking impacts along those areas.
So reducing it by about 60 spaces?
That's correct.
Or changing it by, by about 60 spaces, because we'll have a loss of parking no matter what?
That's correct.
Right. The other question I had is, the, the property owner who owns the property at, I'm sorry, I, I don't remember her name, Main and Crane, or Dodge and Crane, is that it? Yes. You know, I think that, if my understanding is, the speaker raised some important issues about parking around Main and Dodge, can we get a better explanation of that, and a looking at that, in terms of what's the usage of the parking there? That is a very busy intersection, and have we looked at, you know, used our parking department to look at what the usage is, and who's parking there, and what the other availability is for other alternative parking that might make it, might make it useful for us to continue? I mean, because it sounds as though we're not having the protected bike lanes at Main and Dodge, or?
I think you mean Dempster and Dodge.
Okay, Dempster and Dodge, okay.
The lot is in the back, people can park their cars in.
Right, thank you, yeah. Right. Okay.
It's going to be terrible, because that parking on the upper side, you see on the inner side, have those two, have no chance, when they get up to enter Dodge. But if you start up, and let the other supply going in, that's going to be a pain for people to bicycle.
So I, if I could get some information related to the speaker's comments, I, I'd like to have that.
And we're proposing, just so you know, to eliminate the parking on that side where she's talking about.
Okay, that was, okay, that was my question.
So I wanted to point that out.
That's all I have.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Director Robinson, Mr. Nigar. My question, to follow up Alderman Wynn's inquiry, it's really about the, the parking capacity, and how parked is it? And of the 532 spaces between Howard and Church Street, I don't imagine that every segment of Dodge Avenue there is always 100% parked at night. Do we have data that kind of breaks down by segment, in, in the parking usage for each segment?
Yes, we do, mostly during the day. We did do one parking study back in June, and Howard and to Mulford was virtually, durst during the day, was almost at 100%. So there, it was between 85 to 100%.
So high demand for Howard to Mulford.
Yes.
Can you provide us with some of that data?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I, and we're going to do another study again, and certainly, as a part of the, the public hearing process, we can collect more data as well.
I have a couple more questions, if I may, the, do we expect to get approved, the revised plan to be approved by CMAP and IDAT, or are we just hoping that the revisions will meet their approval?
Yes, to
We know.
Yes, to the, the part two. We're, we're hoping that the revisions, I mean, the buffered bike lanes and protected bike lanes, as Sat had indicated, because the, the protected bike lanes, the, the numbers are fairly new, especially in this area in terms of data collection, so Chicago and Evanston have the protected bike lanes in this area, in a built environment, in the congested urban area. So, we're actually the ones that are collecting the data for the, the protected bike lanes.
I'm pretty certain I've seen studies in other places that show that the protected lanes, to answer your question, are safer for cyclists than the buffered lanes are, just for those reasons. And if a door opens and a car that's parked along a protected lane, it's more likely to be a driver-side door, which doesn't affect cyclists. And if it is a pedestrian-side door, the cyclist would end up on a parkway instead of in a traffic lane, if that eventuality came to pass. So, there are a lot of reasons why the protected lanes are safer than the buffered lane.
Have you finished, Alderman Grover? Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
So, it's, it's better to be hit in a protected bike lane. Because I hit the parkway. I want to speak to Alderman Wynn's comments about the speed on Dodge. I think you don't use Dodge very frequently, because I will tell you, I live a half a block from Dodge, I ride Dodge probably 20 times a week, and only after I get on Dodge do I hate myself for remembering, for not remembering to go either to McCormick, where many people go to avoid Dodge, or to Ridge, because Dodge has become so congested and so slow. There are, when, when I go to City Hall... There are, when, when I go to City Hall at 5:00, or 5:30 to come to here, there are lines of cars not moving on Dodge, all the way from just north of Main heading south to Oakton. They, they don't even move. So I, I just don't ever see speeding. Maybe at 11 or 12 o'clock at night, when we leave here, there's a little more speed. You can, you can get up a little more speed on, on Dodge. But the problem with Dodge Avenue and bicycles has absolutely nothing to do with speed because I, I do not see speed. Now, maybe you're talking about north of Dodge, but you can't possibly be talking about from Dodge, from Dempster, let's say, or Church Street to Howard, because it is not a speed zone in any way, shape, or form. Also, remember, there's, there's Oakton School on Dodge, Dawes on Dodge. And, I mean, it, it is just absolutely crazy there at 3:00 or 3:30 when school gets out. There's all sorts of violations going on all the time. I report it all the time to parking people, double parking, parents just dragging their kid across the street, right in the middle of the block, when there's all sorts of protected pedestrian crossings there and crossing guards. So I, you know, I, I think we have some very serious problems on Dodge that don't have to do with bicyclists. Although I think the, the buffered bike lane is a much better solution on Dodge, especially, I'm, I'm thinking specifically south of Oakton. On, on evenings when there are games in that park or, I mean, there are no parking spaces off Dodge in the park. There, people are all parked up. On every Saturday, there's JRC there, that's all parked up. It's, it's a very busy area, and people who don't travel there very often don't think about it. But it's not a speed zone. That's the last thing it is. But there, there is a need not to move any more parking than, I think there's a, a lack of parking. So, well, I realize that's conflicting with the whole concept of green and bicycles. We do need the spaces for somebody, for people to put their cars, so. I, I very much support the buffered lanes on Dodge.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
I actually have a couple of questions and several comments. I, I do agree, parking is definitely an issue over here, but I, something we've been talking about for way too many years is how to address the parking in James Park and what to do about it, and we've not done much about it. So it needs to be addressed for safety issues along Oakton as well. So that'd be great if we could do that as part of this, this process. The buffered lanes, I think as a, as someone who's an experienced cyclist, who cycles regularly, I, I actually prefer the buffered lanes for, for myself, for riding. And I'm not sure of other experienced cyclists who do it a lot, do this well. But I understand the, the protected for students and regular commuters is definitely much safer, and I think the data has, has proven that. If we do end up going with the buffered and the striping lanes, is there a way to put in bumps with those stripes? Or those, the pavement slashed in a way where it makes your tires? Thank you. Thank you for the, the proper term. You knew where I was going. To me, that seems to make a little bit more sense because what you, I see with many of the buffered bike lanes is that people ignore it and they drive in that striped area, they drive in the lanes. And so if you have the rumble strips or bumps, that will stop them from doing that. Or if they're veering over, it'll wake them up, say, oh, I'm not supposed to be in this area. So if we do go that route, I think that's really important. Also, is there a cost differential? I'm sure there is. The difference between a protected lane and a buffered lane? And can you give us that information? Thank you.
We think there'll be a little bit of a cost reduction, the way that we have the, it proposed. But, I mean, it's mostly paint and the, the street was already resurfaced. So, I mean, it's not a tremendous amount of, of difference, other than the delineators that would be purchased for the protected bike lane. And I, I wanted to clarify something, too, because the, the proposed plan, the actual parking space reductions would actually be minus 103 for protected bike lane. The way that the plan is presented and where we have IDOT approval, it actually eliminates the parking along Robert Crown on Dodge Avenue. So that's not reflected there. So the current approved plan for protected bike lane actually removes those parking spaces as well. So I wanted to make sure that we were clear.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to Director Robinson and staff for not only coming to my ward meetings, but the time and effort and energy put into this. Alderman Rainey, you kind of hit on a, on a lot of the points that I was going to bring up. And, and sometimes I wish as a council, when we look at these issues, losing 60 spots in any stretch of neighborhood, I would hope that you would all be concerned about that. And, and so thank you for, for the plan that we're looking at. I know it isn't ideal to all the bike enthusiasts out there, but on behalf of the neighbors, I think it's a good, a good compromise. I'll hit on two points that Alderman Rainey raised earlier. And I live one block off of Dodge, and, and currently, that is the behavior of cyclists. There is a lane that cyclists drive, downright right now, right now. I, I don't know the data for the last two or three years, but I'm not aware of any major accidents that have happened along, along that, that strip of land. I feel just as safe riding down Dodge as I do riding down Church, where there's no protections. And if anything, I would argue that the velocity along Church from the high school downtown, the traffic moves a lot faster. But that's my own personal opinion. I, I am going to support the, the buffered lane based on the limited impact that it's going to have on that particular stretch of land. Again, it isn't ideal. I'm, I'm still a little concerned of the lost 32, and maybe after this meeting, at another time, I'll, I'll understand exactly where along the Dodge corridor, we're actually going to lose those, those spaces, just so I can communicate that effectively to our residents. And thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. I'm going to agree with one of the speakers. I've forgotten her name. But she commented that Evanston really isn't, if you're on a bicycle and existing here, it's not really very bike-friendly. In fact, I, I challenge anybody in the room to compare odometers with me. I put a lot of miles on my bicycle. I would probably say that Evanston is the most hostile environment that I ride in from here to Wisconsin, and it's by a pretty wide margin. I would also say that Dodge and Central Street are probably the two most hostile streets that I ride on. I've ridden on Dodge hundreds of times, but I've ridden on Asbury thousands of times. That's because Dodge is not a safe corridor. There are bike lanes there, but they don't work. People go around other cars. People don't respect the bicycles. My kids used to ride their bikes to school from time to time, but I would be terrified. And if I'm going down Dodge, either on a bicycle or in a car at school time, it is very, very troubling to see the kids trying to make their way to the high school. It's unfortunate that we would lose, lose the parking. I think that we can look at things around James Park to improve the, the parking circumstances there. But this is really a question of prioritizing safety. What we're talking about is making the streets safer for everybody. If you're in a car, you don't want to hit a bicycle or a child or a pedestrian. It's the worst thing that could happen. And Alderman Rainey, you're, you're exactly right. And I think, Alderman Grover, the difference between getting hit by a door and a parkway is, you know, maybe a broken bone, but as one of our other speakers mentioned, one of your neighbors had the other result, where he was struck in the bike lane by a vehicle and killed. Okay? This is a question of prioritizing. People can come in and tell stories all day long about, you know, bicycles do this, cars do that. I keep saying at my meetings, and I keep saying to my friends, it's not a question of what bicyclists do or what drivers do, it's a question of what people do. If you're a jerk, you're a jerk in a car, or you're a jerk on a bike, you're a jerk anywhere you go. Yeah, that's the bottom line. What we're trying to do is create a safe environment. We can't fix all the jerks in the world, but what we can do is we can create a safer environment for everybody to operate in. And that's, you know, somebody was inquiring about, do we have, do we have a plan? We have an idea. It's the Complete Streets idea. And that is to take all of these things into account and to create the safest environment that we can, that we can create. So I really feel very strongly that this protected lane does do that. That's what we got the grant funding for, and we have a lane already. It might not be as buffered as much as the other one, but, but adding some paint to it isn't really going to change anything. So, you know, that's how I feel about it. And, and I hope everybody can agree with me that this is, that this is a priority. And to the extent that we lose parking, we can, you know, hopefully look for other ways to, to find solutions. If it's, if it's winter and there's a snow route, there's a new purchaser of the parking lot or the, of the shopping center, let's talk to them about having parking during snow days. There are things that we can be doing to solve those crisis situations, but on a day-to-day basis, we have to create a safer environment for everybody.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a, a few questions, more technical. Do we have enough bike parking at James Park? What's our, what's our capacity for bike parking at James Park? Just as an aside, I'm, I'm thinking we, there's some at the Levy Center, and I don't think there's any near it. I think we need more bike parking at James Park. And, and if we're looking to encourage more bike riding to the park to eliminate some of the cars that line James Park all summer long, it seems, it would be smart to put in more bike parking there. What's the timing of our resubmission to CMAP and IDOT? Is this something that we need to decide tonight? Or can we get the data from the, the parking data so that we can take a look at that? And are, are we in a hurry to, to do this tonight?
First meeting, in, in first week of October, CMAP is meeting. If we miss that meeting, then we have to wait till November. And then the sunset means if, by 2016, if we don't use the funds, we lose the funds by 2016.
So, so it's, it's implementing a protected or buffered bike lane before some date in 2016? CMAP meets monthly? Sounds like, and our plan was to just resubmit for their consideration at the next nearest meeting?
Yeah, we'll find out, and definitely we should be able to go to the next meeting, yes.
And Alderman Grover, I think if the council has additional questions, you know, we would like to wrap this up by the end of the calendar year so that we can begin appropriate work.
And did we envision buffered lanes with delineators or just paint to delineate the lane?
It's just paint. It would just be paint.
And then long-term, do we have any plans to extend bike lanes north of Church on Dodge to Simpson? The only bike lane to connect the students, ETHS students, north-south-north of Church Avenue are the brand-new bike lanes on Bridge Street-Bridge. Otherwise, there's really, or to take the Arboretum and Twiggs-Butler Park to school. And, because if you look, if you, if you pull up Google Maps and you highlight bicycling, it just seems all of the bike routes dead-end at Evanston. We don't have the north-south connections, we don't really have the east-west connections. That's next on our agenda is Church Avenue out to McCormick. But it, it just, as you said, Alderman Wilson, it just seems as if, I don't have your odometer count, certainly, but I do, I spent a lot of time just today on our bike routes on Davis and Church, and, and they just dead-end. It's hard to get where you need to go. The connectivity is not there, and not to mention the kind of safety that I think we're looking for.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, I think, I think there's no way, and I think it's erroneous, to compare the marked bike lane now on Dodge with the buffered bike lane. It is a really inadequately marked bike lane. It's very light, you can't really see it. I think some people even confuse it for the parking lane. So I think that's a real problem there. But I think a buffered bike lane is much more elaborate and much more visible and much more protected than, than what we're talking about, because the current bike lane is just terrible. It, it scares me, and I know that people are thinking it's part of the parking lane.
Yeah. And the current bike lane is four inches, and what we're proposing for buffered would be 18, 18, four, four inches to 18 inches.
And it would be buffered on both sides.
That's correct. 18 inches on both sides.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Mr. Nigar, did you say that the public meeting is November 14th?
No, the date has not been set. Sometime in November.
But a public meeting, right?
Yes.
So you, did you plan to go to CMAP before you had the public meeting? That's what I'm trying to get in my head. Trying to get the process.
We planned it all concurrent, you know, go to the CMAP and go to the public meeting at the same time. Because we already have the approval for the protected bike lane. If we decide to switch over to the buffer, then we have a backup plan to get the design approval done at the same time.
Um...
See, what I'm saying is we have...
I hear what you're saying. I'm just having a little problem with that, because I was thinking that the public meeting, I'm sorry, I saw the 14 on 2014, I'm sorry, but November. And then the CMAP meeting is in November. I would think that one would come before the other. I would think.
Well, what, if we were, if we had council direction to proceed with a buffered lane, we would go ahead and start the coordination with CMAP and IDOT to, to get that approval. The purpose of the public meeting is to really go block by block detailed, with more detailed impacts and, and information, once we know exactly what we're doing. And we have a requirement to do a public meeting once we know exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
So that's really what that was.
So it's not for more public input into, okay.
It's for providing notice to the public.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move item SP2. Do you want me to read it? Dodge Avenue biking improvements from Howard Street to Church.
Is there a second?
With the buffered, yeah. With the buffered.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Dodge Avenue biking with the buffered lane. Alderman Wynn, did you want to speak to that?
No.
And Alderman Rainey.
Well, just that, I think bypassing this does not mean that we don't want the information that various members requested, so we can, we'll still...
City Clerk, would you call the roll on this?
I had one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, Don.
Thank you. And I, I'm just going to hope that we can proceed with the original plan. I'll be very disappointed if we don't do that. I've already said my piece, but I really think that we should be prioritizing the safety. And there's just no indication that the other, and Alderman Rainey, you're correct, you know, it's, it's not marked well enough, and certainly, the buffered lane would be an improvement. And I actually strongly favor buffered lanes in other areas. I think buffered lanes are, are a very good option on some streets. But you have experience with Dodge, I have some experience with Dodge on a bicycle as well, and I have, I have zero confidence that, that this will be, that this buffer idea will be effective.
Thank you. Alderman Burris.
Yeah, I just want to be clear. So the motion is that we're going to abandon the protected lane, and we're only going to do the buffered lane. Is my, because I, I'm, I want to be real clear. If, if we're, if we're talking about voting for the buffered lane, I'm going to vote no. Because I think we should have the protected lane on Dodge. So just, I just want to, I just want to make that really, really clear when, when it's like, oh, we're against bike lanes. No, I think that this is the wrong decision. I think we need to have protected lanes. I'm just being really clear about it.
All right. Alderman Braithwaite, it is my understanding of your motion that it is to approve the staff's request for submission of revised biking improvements on Dodge. So that would be not buffered.
No, no. The buffer would be buffered.
That would be buffered. All right, not protected. Okay, we got it. City Clerk, city clerk, would you? Alderman Rainey, go ahead. City Clerk, would you, Alderman Rainey, go ahead.
However, what I'm seeing this as being, while I do prefer the buffered lanes, I see this as giving the staff the opportunity to go to CMAP and ask them if we can do the buffered lanes. That does not mean that they can't do the other kind of lanes as well. And could there not be areas of Dodge where you could do buffered lanes and protected lanes?
Where, the only place that we have that identified in the plan is in front of the high school because of the bus pull-off and the parent drop-off in front of the high school. So we actually did put a buffered lane, the bike lane is actually on the outside as opposed to against the curb.
Well, I would suggest to you that the area from Dodge School to the Levy Center entrance on the west side of Dodge, south of Oakton, is very similar to that situation.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you. At this point, I'm uncomfortable voting in favor of the motion and the staff's recommendation until I have more information about the parking needs and requirements along each segment of Dodge Avenue. And just going with a gut feeling that it feels like we're backtracking from our commitment to multimodal use of one of our major arteries in Evanston.
All right, seeing no lights, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
No.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
No.
Five nays, four ayes.
The motion fails. Alderman Wilson.
I move that we proceed with the approved plan that CMAP and IDOT have provided us the grant for.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to proceed with the approved plan that CMAP has already approved. All in favor, let's just do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, roll the call.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
No.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Six to three, it passes.
Six to three, the motion passes. So I would like to ask staff, please, as a result of this vote, to look at parking very seriously, because those are going to be severely impacted neighborhoods. Alderman Braithwaite.
Madam Mayor, and also that we make a special notice that goes straight out to the neighbors, letting them know specifically that on that block they're going to be impacted by the change in loss of parking when the meeting is. And I'll do the same. Thank you.
City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, SP3...
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, I would just like you to remember that the issue we went through in the downtown and other neighborhoods about the loss of parking, it is just as important in the residential areas, especially on the south end of town, south of Oakton, even south of Main Street. It's just absolutely bumper-to-bumper on those two stretches. And I'm really mortified that nobody on this council even acknowledges that people need a place to park. They might have ten bicycles in one car, they still need a place to put their car. And these are buildings that were built way before we were required to have a certain amount of parking. Alderman Wynn has said that, you know, you've got to have like three spaces for every unit, or two spaces for every unit if you've got a two-bedroom apartment.
Alderman Rainey, that's not accurate.
Two spaces.
No, that's not accurate.
Well, you, well, my recollection of what Alderman Wynn said was that when they surveyed, when they surveyed people in apartment buildings on Chicago Avenue, that people had two cars.
Alderman Rainey, that is not accurate.
All right. People in south Evanston have two cars, unlike your people. And we need a place to put those cars. And I am just asking the staff, when they, if you do go back to CMAP for anything, how, what are people going to do? There's no parking in certain places around schools. We have a school there, we have parks there. I cannot imagine the people in the area of Robert Crown not having no parking on that side of the street. It's just unbelievable to me. Cars are not a bad thing. Some people can't ride a bicycle. People have to put their car someplace. And there's absolutely nothing wrong with buffered bike lanes, nothing. Not in that area, there's not. So while it's going to be very nice for those of you who are, you know, very avid cyclists, what about the rest of us?
Thank you, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Braithwaite, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to go back to a couple of comments in terms of, I understand the emotion and the passion that's put into this argument, but I just think it's worth saying that in defense of the neighbors and the people that work really hard along that Dodge corridor, that we were talking about the traffic, not the elements or the neighborhood itself and the characterization of calling it danger. And I've heard people refer to it over and over again as a dangerous corridor, and I just want to be clear. And I also support the comments of Alderman Rainey. I'm very disappointed in the vote this evening, and I know that we will be expanding this bike lane as we go through the years, and we'll remember the inconvenience to neighbors on this side of town as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager.
Yes, SP3 regarding Mason Park and ETHS, Mr. Nigar.
This is just an off-street bike path on the south side of Church, basically between Dodge and Pittner. I'm going to the next area, as you can see. Basically between Pittner and Dodge, working with the ETHS, we will widen the sidewalk on the south side and just provide for a small section the bike path between Dodge and Pittner. We still need to work with IDOT to extend any bike path going west to McCormick. That would pretty much, because of the existing street parking and the width of the street, it is a lot more complex. So we have to address that in the next stage. But for now, we are requesting to proceed with the design for, basically between Pittner and Dodge on the south side of Church. This is just a start to reach McCormick.
Alderman Rainey.
On areas where parking is going to be removed, do you have, do you have a map plotted with those spaces that are going to be removed?
Sure.
Any of these plans?
Sure.
I would like that.
Sure.
Alderman Holmes?
If I'm remembering correctly, on, between Dodge and Pittner, on the south side, there would be no impact on parking on the south side, because that's all of the high school property, and there is no parking loss there, if I remember correctly, right? It's when we get past Pittner to go to McCormick that we have the issues.
Yes.
Okay.
That's good.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Mr. Nigar. Would you fill us in on your conversations with the high school folks about incorporating bike lane at the north end of the property?
Yes, go ahead.
And there are quite a few students who are looking to get to the corral, the bike corral on the backside of the high school, so this would be nice to put them right there.
We have had, we've been in discussion with the high school for two years with Mr. Stafford about extending the walkway. They want a wider multi-use path to actually pull the students away from the street, even just for snow removal purposes as well. They offered the use of the parkway there to widen the parkway to accommodate both bikes and pedestrians. At the top corner at Church and Dodge, the bike path that comes across Dodge Avenue actually will angle through the school property, which is where bike parking is actually located at the high school, up on the north end. And then it will circle back out to continue on. Pittner Avenue was actually wide enough to accommodate and quiet enough to accommodate bikes that could move up and down Pittner to Lake Street if necessary. But so that we don't just drop you off at the corner of Pittner and Church and just say so long. So there is somewhere else to go beyond that, so. And then, again, we are going, we plan to work with IDOT to make the connection to McCormick, and Skokie is actually planning to add a bike lane on Church from McCormick Boulevard to Gross Point. So actually, it will be quite the connection.
So can you give us an estimate of what might be the timing for the Pittner to McCormick segment? Because so many students are taking their bikes along the Skokie bike route and the Arboretum to get to the high school as the safest route, north-south to the high school? And then they come onto Church, and they're riding on Church right now, and then that narrow sidewalk so close to traffic. But what would be the timing of that last connection?
There, realistically, it's probably going to be 2016. So we will spend 2015 talking to IDOT to convince them this is really a non-standard with a bike path, a two-way bike path, you know, on their street, and we have to look at the parking impact. So we need to have more neighborhood community meetings with that segment as well, to see how best to make it all fit. And also, you know, it would result in reducing a lane across the bridge, which is not necessarily a bad thing, which would allow us to look at a pedestrian crossing, which I think has been a request from the community. But with four lanes of traffic, IDOT will not allow a pedestrian crossing at that point, across the four lanes, across four lanes, at McDaniel, yes, at McDaniel and Church.
Great improvements. Yeah, absolutely.
So we may be able to, because it's only one lane on the other side in Skokie. And then we widen out to, again, people pick up speed as they come across the bridge, and then...
Somehow, I thought Skokie was ahead of us on the McCormick out to Gross Point portion of their bike lane, but that's not happened.
Yeah, I think they're planning to do that in 2015 as well. Yes, they resurfaced this year.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, and do you have a pointer by any chance?
That would be great. Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
All right, so, draw the path if you could, just so we're all clear, because I'm not 100% sure.
Why don't you just go up to the screen?
Or a pointed stick.
You need a ladder. Oh, now we're at the end. There we go.
Okay.
It worked.
It worked.
Suzette, it worked.
It worked?
You had it for a second.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, here you go. Suzette, Peter has one. Here you go, I'm giving it to you. Courtesy of Alderman Braithwaite.
It's a discipline, I was doing that, it's a discipline, I'm a public works director, I can figure this out. There you go.
All right.
Okay.
You need to speak into the mic, Sat.
Basically, the bike lane would start here, and then we may have to go around the curve here and then come back, and a multi-use path, pretty much here.
How would they get to the bike corral, then?
Bike parking behind the school?
Right, so they'll come down Church?
Yeah.
No, uh-uh, uh-uh, no, they go further.
Go ahead.
The bike corral is on the west side of the school.
It's here. No, no, it's right here, it's right there.
It's right there.
Where's the Dodge?
Down.
No, it's further south than that.
There you go.
Oh, right here.
Right there.
So what they do is, so we're coming through the trees there and then back out, and then there's a path right there that actually connects back through the school.
Okay. And then would ETHS be paying for that themselves, I hope? No, they want us to pay for that part? Can we...
Everything's up for discussion.
Right, that's, hopefully that will stay up for discussion.
All taxpayer dollars.
Suzette, while you're, Madam Mayor, may I ask further questions about this route, because I'm confused?
You are next on the list.
So Suzette, could you explain Pittner? Because the packet does not have any map in it. So what happens at Pittner? Doesn't, aren't we going west on Church Street all the way to McCormick, or no?
No, we have to stop here because...
Suzette, the mic.
I'm sorry, we have to stop there because the rest of this corridor, we would come out into the street, and it's all residential property, and this is IDOT's road. So we have to get approval to make the connection from Pittner to the McCormick, the Channel Trail.
Somehow, rather, I'm missing something. So can you explain, so are we going, do we, we're seeking approval to continue the route along the south side of Church to McCormick, or we're not?
Not now, but eventually, yes.
That is the plan.
Eventually, yes.
Okay, so then, is there some route that's being proposed north and south on Pittner?
Yes, we are, we do plan to talk about this space, the, Pittner is wide enough to accommodate bicycle traffic and quiet enough to provide the north and south traffic.
Between Church and Lake?
That's correct.
Okay, and then it would connect at Lake and Pittner, then what does it connect to?
Yeah. You got that? Yeah.
You could go around in circles, around, around the high school if you wish, because you could go back up, back up Lake. But you can also connect down and go through neighborhood streets to pick up the trail at McDaniel, all on the Evanston side. So you would really...
What trail at McDaniel?
The bike path at...
The Skokie bike trail?
No, 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 on our side, at Dempster, at Dempster and McDaniel. There's a bike path that goes through the, is that Harbor Park? Is the park?
For the next presentation, could we have better maps that indicate what's being proposed?
Alderman Braithwaite, what's the name of that park that I'm talking about? Harbor, that's what I thought, Harbor Park. The bike trail goes through Harbor Park and connects all the way to Main Street. So.
Okay, now I understand which park you're talking about. Okay, but for the next one, could we, City Manager, could we have better maps?
Certainly.
Because this is taking up a lot of time. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, if you prefer, the evening is getting a little late, we'd like to get to the last item.
Yes, I'm done.
Mr. Nigar, Ms. Robinson, could we bring this back maybe in two weeks and have some better maps? And if there's any other additional questions that need to be answered between now and then, I don't know that there's any greater urgency. We just had to put this on this evening because we were talking about bikes.
Mine was just a clarification that Pittner is a one-way street going north.
Okay, that was an easy one. You can ask that. Alderman Wilson and Alderman Braithwaite, are you all right with waiting?
Yes, that's the way to go. Although I would like to remind ETHS that we'd like them to pay for the portion from the street across their property.
Alderman Braithwaite, are you all right with waiting for the next one?
One other comment, it wasn't clear to me if we were going, well, here it is, Connect Davis, I guess you're going to talk about it right now.
And Madam Mayor, we'll just come back with this whole last item, SP3. We'll come back in two weeks on the 13th of October, if that's all right, Madam Mayor?
That's fine.
Very good. This SP3, so we'll have better, I think we also need some better maps on the Mason Park piece as well as the, as well as the ETHS piece. So we'll come back with some better maps, some better labeling. I'm looking to buy a laser pointer right now on it. 2036, if I buy it in 44 minutes, we'll have a two-day shipping.
Sat, can I please have one? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next is bike policy issues.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Ilda Capricioso, our assistant to the City Manager, is here. As we've talked about infrastructure issues, we also believe it's important to talk more com- completely about some policy direction and some, some policy initiatives. And so, Ilda's here to talk about that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, Manager Bobkowitz, Clerk Green. Thank you and good evening. Ilda Capricioso, Assistant to the City Manager and our Governmental Affairs Coordinator. Tonight, I'm here to briefly present the process for next steps regarding our bike policy efforts. In the presentation tonight, I'm gonna cover some of the opportunities that are before us, just recent activities and updates in the process to develop future initiatives regarding bike policies here at the city. And then take any comments and questions you may have. So, this is a community of early adopters, something I don't need to tell you. And you've, as City Council, you've responded and made many multimodal improvements like biking amenities and treatments throughout the city. And as a result, Evanston now sits on a list with a number of large communities such as DC and Chicago and New York City. And because of Evanston's strong green culture, your leadership and staff efforts, we will continue to rank well on these bike lists, especially with the recent announcement of the DIVI Bike Share coming to Evanston, which will not only expand our bike portfolio, but also our community of bicyclists here in Evanston. So, now's really the time to embrace these accolades and these opportunities to move forward with positive community engagement with our neighbors about what type of biking community we want to be and how we will communicate that bike awareness moving forward. So, the next couple of slides just list out some of the activities that we've been taking on over the last couple of weeks and months, including the Bike Plan Update, which also included a passage of Resolution 57R14, designating the Bicycle Program Coordinator. The City Manager has designated this responsibility to me. And then throughout September, Public Works Staff and myself, as, as was earlier mentioned, have attended a number of award meetings and community events to gather feedback on both planned improvements as well as the general bike plan update and concerns and comments from residents. As well as tonight's special council meeting, this also serves as an opportunity to hear more from residents about bikes and the bike policy. So, as your Bicycle Program Coordinator, I've been meeting cross-departmentally to identify different roles and collaboration with our various departments to help strategize about how to advance the different recommendations in the Bike Plan Update. And we'll continue to do this over the next several months. Additionally, staff has also been meeting with stakeholder groups to hear how they wanna help and what they want, what more the city can be doing. So, we'll continue to host these types of discussions, both formally and informally. And on the next slide, I'll talk a little bit more about the Transportation and Parking So, later this month, we are proposing or recommending to the Transportation and Parking Committee that it revise its mission and composition to better serve as a public forum for multimodal policy discussions, including bikes and transit. I think by accomplishing this, the city can allow more time to discuss issues related to bikes, discuss and understand the trade-offs with potential bike improvements and investments that were presented in the Bike Plan Update. Additionally, this is also a forum that provides residents a place to express their ideas and their concerns more publicly. In your packet includes a summary of the public comments that were gathered from the meetings and the various emails that I received over the last few weeks from thebikes@city@evanston.org. This wordle is just a depiction of the most common comments that were made via the comments from the emails and from the various meetings that we attended. The takeaway for me from this is that residents, as you heard tonight from some of the earlier comments, are really concerned about how bicyclists and car traffic and pedestrians are interacting on our bike lanes and bike routes. So, what is the process moving forward to address that concern? So, I organized the comments that we received into three initiative areas. The first one being outreach and engagement. We heard that we needed to improve how we talk to residents about the bike issues and policies. I think revising the Transportation and Parking Committee and utilizing community forums will provide an opportunity to facilitate more two-way communication and better discuss the trade-offs when making bike investments here in Evanston. Secondly, we heard that we needed to educate residents more about transportation safety rules, how to use the bike lanes, how to be aware of bicyclists, where to ride, the sidewalks, safe bike routes, where to park bikes, all of these things. So, we will need to use community and advocacy groups to help aid in identifying strategies that can better educate and provide technical assistance to our residents. And I think it's important to notice, to note that with both of these initiatives, we will, we will really try to rely on the partnerships to ensure success moving forward. And then finally, we heard, we needed to enforce the rules of the road. So, the last initiative focuses on regulatory efforts. And this really should include an evaluation of the outreach and education initiatives that can help inform the need for a regulatory approach, such as modifications to either zoning or existing ordinances or perhaps a standalone bike ordinance in general. I didn't realize how small those letters up there are and words, but you have the presentation. So, thinking about the process moving forward, I think the goal is to really mobilize our staff with community partners this fall and winter through continued dialogue. In the memo, there's some more specific initiatives that are outlined. But like I mentioned, I think the goal will be to really flesh out some of these ideas collectively as a community, to identify internal resources, present those then to Transportation and Parking Committee, eventually to council for approval. Hopefully, what is approved and then launch those particular initiatives and identify what steps are needed in the fall to evaluate what's, what's been working based on those initiatives and then to look at the next steps from a regulatory perspective. So, there will be many opportunities before the next biking season to engage and educate our community. And so, I hope that this overview, this quickly, quick overview was helpful and provides a better framework for how city staff is recommending to proceed forward. So, take any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I agree with what some of the comments Alderman Wilson made earlier about safety. I think, I'm not a biker, but I also don't wanna be that person that runs into, runs into a biker. No one wants to be that person. And I think the initiatives regarding safety, I think we need to really, we need to escalate those, some of those at least, getting the word out. You know, we all need to be on the same page. And I don't know if it's rules of the road or memorandum of understanding, but we all need to agree that we have certain expectations when we meet at an intersection or when we are on a sidewalk as a pedestrian and there is bike traffic. I think we all need to understand and, and just work to find a common ground, a middle ground. And, you know, likewise, I think that will help alleviate some of the hostilities that Alderman Wilson spoke of as well. So, just wanted to emphasize that. And that's really my greatest concern of all.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Ms. Capricioso. I think some low-hanging fruit, we've discussed this before, is to develop, to develop a webpage on the city's website, which would have for anyone interested in bike resources or maps or routing or rules of the road, connections to local clubs. And I think we will be taking up the generous offer of the Evanston Bike Club and the Active Transportation Alliance on helping us develop perhaps web resources for all users of roads and streets. I think that'd be a great place to start and, and I, you already have this in the works, I'm guessing. Yeah, great.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Thank you. And I, I wanna sneak in a quote, and I promised that I did not plan the foreshadowing, but a quote that I like, it's, "I always felt a strong attraction toward the bicycle because it is the vehicle of so much harmless pleasure and because the skill required in handling it obloges those whom out to keep clear heads and steady hands." And that is from Frances Willard's book from 1895, Wheel Within a Wheel.
Is Virginia Beatty still here?
She's left. But, so, I, I, and I'd made comments before about...
Well, Frances has a Twitter account, so let's try to get it on her.
Somebody can, Jane, you've got Twitter. I don't, I don't, I don't tweet. But I, I mentioned the idea of hostility. And I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that, that it tends to be, it goes both ways, bicycles and cars. There's, there's hostility on both points. And I think the goal here is to get to a point where we can have a comfortable relationship. If you wanna have, if you want to be respected, you have to be respectful as well. And I think that the, the single most powerful tool that I've discovered in, in being on the road and engaging in a, in a comfortable relationship is a wave and a hello or a thank you. And, and that's the single most effective tool I have found. Because when you look someone in the eyes and you acknowledge them, you're making a connection. So, if I come up to an intersection, you see the person, they wave you through, you thank them, just let them know you're there, let them know you appreciate that mutual respect.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I support all of these steps and I'm really looking forward to expanding the Transportation and Parking Committee's mandate so that we have regular policy discussions about bicycling in the city. So, we can strategize and do long-range planning to work with all of the members of the community. The second thing I wanted to say is I, I agree with all the prior speakers about education. And I, I look forward to our putting education programs in our elementary schools and in the high school. And we have a great opportunity with Northwestern students who cycle through, oh, that's a terrible pun, I'm sorry, who come through and are, you know, renewed every year. And if we can establish a good education program with, at Northwestern, I think will really improve safety for everyone in Evanston. You know, I frequently drive home from these meetings at, you know, at night and I'm always amazed at this flicker ahead of me down the road. And as I get closer, I realize it's a student driving home at night in a black hat, a black coat, with very little lighting on the bike. And what I think frequently is those students don't drive in Evanston, so they don't realize how invisible they are. So, if we can work with Northwestern to educate the students who are arriving every year about how to make themselves more visible, then we're really going a long way. And one of my ideas is that Northwestern give every student one of those reflective vests that, that, you know, exist, everyone wears in Europe. In Europe, if you're outdoors doing anything, you wear one of those reflective vests. And I think that if we can start promoting not only the rules of the road, but how to make yourself visible more, will really go a long way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Tendem.
Thank you. I, I did have one special request and it's what Alderman Wynn just touched on. As, as we get older, our, sometimes our night vision diminishes. And I, I, I have encountered a lot of people on bikes with very little reflection, very little lighting. And I would just like to throw that out there right now. The days are getting shorter. People will be on their bikes. It'll be dark at 5:00, not too long from now. And I, and I can't emphasize the fact that I, it is very difficult to see folks at night if they're not wearing some sort of brighter, lighter, reflective or some kind of indicator that they're there. So, that's something we can really encourage people right now to start doing.
Thank you, Alderman Grover.
Thank you for the wisdom of Frances Willard. I swear she's in the room tonight. But we heard a lot of other good comments that I think should guide our thinking on bike planning tonight. Ms. Watson who said, "Don't be wary of change, but create predictability in our bike planning." Nancy who said, "Let's encourage rather than discourage bike usage." Mr. Seidel who said something about connectivity being important to jobs in schools. Mr. Sherborne and Ms. Harden encouraged us to use data as we undertake our, our evaluation of bike infrastructure. And then Mrs. O'Neil who said, "Just plan it right." Plan it right.
Thank you, Alderman Holmes.
Well, I, I learned something from Alderman Wilson some time ago because he shared that quote, "If a person's a jerk in a car, they're a jerk in a bike," with me a long time ago. No, a long time ago. We were discussing something else. It was months ago. But I had the chance yesterday, Alderman Wilson, to share that with someone at the Bike the Ridge, because we were, they, a friend of mine had brought a friend from Wilmette down to understand how wonderful Bike the Ridge was. And we were talking about her being afraid to ride. And, and so I said, "Well, let me tell you what Alderman Wilson said to me." And I shared that with her. And I'm, I'm sharing it now because I think that what it did for me was to make me much more conscious in terms of really looking at how unconsiderate people can be. And when Alderman Tendem just talked about having the reflectors or something on at night, I had mentioned before, and I think I mentioned it to the chief, about even our friends over, over the rainbow who ride their wheelchairs at night with no reflectors or anything. And sometimes when I leave here at night, they're coming to Walgreens. And, I mean, you could almost hit them because they're just there with nothing. And so, it's about education. And I, I think that one of the things that we have to do is not only educate our bikers and our, but pedestrians who just walk out with dark clothes on as well, but also our wheelchair folk who use the streets without having reflectors. So, it's education for us all. And I think that is a lesson well learned by me from you. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Seeing no lights for further discussion.
Can I get the password in?
You can get the last word in, yes.
Everybody should wear a bike helmet, okay? I just, I feel so strongly about bike helmets. So, that's just my little, my last word. Thanks.
And you told me I needed a newer one one time. It's call of the wards. Alderman Grover.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
No report.
Thank you, Alderman Burris.
No report.
All right. Moving right along, Alderman Fin, Alderman Brathwaite.
I actually have a report. Or, or it's just a word of thank you. I actually wish that we'd raised this in the beginning of the meeting. But I just wanna acknowledge our, our city staff, Wally Bobkowitz, Joe McCray, Kevin Brown, Stacy Morang. I saw folks from the Community Economic Development Department and many other divisions of our city staff that were present at the Blackmail Summit at Evanston Township High School this past Friday. This is the first time in, in, growing up in Evanston, that we've ever had an event where members of the community, city and also the high school community got together to focus on our blackmail students. I thought the event was incredibly successful. And, and I realize in order to pull off something like that, you have to have all three entities working on the same page. So, just acknowledging the City Manager and our staff and all the members of the community that came out to support the event. I hope, I look forward to some meaningful follow-up and, and the next activity that will move the needle. I think that over the years, we've, we've heard so many negative things. And for, as a participant and as a parent at ETHS, it felt really good to just be in a room and, and looking at all the wonderful talented students as well as dedicated members of the community. So, I see nothing but good things to come out of this activity. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And kudos to Marcus Campbell who organized it and did, I'm told, a wonderful job.
And Amadou, Amadou Dramay. If I start getting into names, I'll keep going. But Amadou Dramay who really, and Eric Witherspoon and Clerk Green. I mean, the names go on, so...
They did a great job. So, thanks to all of them. Alderman Wynn.
Yes, I, this is a reference. This is on another note, but it comes out of something that happened this weekend. I was at the Green Living Festival and I happened to have a conversation with a woman who is part of an organization, a fair trade organization. And something she mentioned to me is that just recently, the city of Chicago has, I don't know whether they passed an ordinance, but they're definitely looking at sourcing their city uniforms from a fair trade organizations. And I would like the city of Evanston to investigate that and find out. I know we have city uniforms and I would like to find out if it's possible to source those from a fair trade company.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
No report.
Alderman Tendem.
No report.
Thank you all. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.